Call the meeting in order of the Wilmington City Council. I'd like to welcome all those who are with us here this evening and all those who are watching us at home. Thank you for taking an interest in your government. At this time, I'd like to introduce Captain Joe Michael James of the Wilmington Fire Department. If he's here, please come forward and give our invocation and ask if everyone will stand or remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can we bow our heads, please? Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of this city and the people who serve it. Tonight, we ask for the wisdom, for our council members' wisdom to listen well and to serve selfishly, help our communities preserve together, each doing our part for the greater good. Help us build something strong today. Jesus Christ in my prayer. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Tyrone Garrett was going to be here from the Housing Authority, but he is going to be rescheduled. Our first person of recognition here is, I'd like to recognize Ms. Tina Newsome with UNCW and Ms. Amber Smith, and this is proclamation naming October the 9th to 2025 as Ageism Awareness Day. prejudice, and how we feel, and discrimination, how we act toward others based on age, and where the population of Wilmington is aging, is there approximately 23,000 people over the age of 65 Wilmington, or 19.8% of the population. Whereas ageism negatively impacts people's health and longevity, financial well-being throughout life, while holding positive ideas about our older future selves is associated with a seven and a half year increase in life expectancy. And whereas preventing ageism in education, employment, housing, culture, and healthcare will benefit all of us, and it is up to all of us to ensure that older people are respected and portrayed as capable, competent, effective, and valued in all areas of society. And whereas ageism awareness and preventing ageism is essential to promoting health and well-being for current and future generations within our city, ensuring all individuals age with dignity, respect, and the support they deserve. Now therefore, we, the members of the Wilmington City Council, do hereby proclaim October the 9th, 2025, as Ageism Awareness Day in the City of Wilmington, North Carolina. So I'm going to give you this, and I'm going to let you speak. Thank you.
So hi there. I'm Tina Newsome, and I coordinate the gerontology program at UNCW. With me is Amber Smith, who's the Director of the New Hanover County Senior Resource Center, and Logan Britt, who's the Aging Compliance Specialist with the Cape Fear Area Agency on Aging. So thank you all for providing this proclamation to help raise awareness about the impact of ageism on people of all ages. We're all aging, and we work with and on behalf of people of all ages. Promoting positive ideas about our own future selves and recognizing, embracing, and celebrating the capacity and contributions we can all make throughout life improves engagement and well-being for each of us. Ageism is a massive challenge in our society and often goes unnoticed, but negative thoughts, feelings, and treatment of someone simply because of a person's age are detrimental to each of our well-being, our health, and how long we live, particularly when we internalize negative ideas about growing older. We're grateful that the City of Wilmington is committed to being an age-friendly community. Age-friendly approaches in communities inform how infrastructure is developed to be accessible, safe, and welcoming for people of all ages. Age-friendly communities help people stay active and connected to one another throughout long lives, creating ongoing opportunities for engagement and processes for reaching out to those at risk of social isolation. Great gains in life expectancy have been made in our society within living memory. A 100-year-old person today was not expected to live past about 65 or 70 when they were born. The percentage of people over 65 years of age is going up globally and particularly in Wilmington, where people are excited to engage in this beautiful area and access so many activities, resources, and services, whether someone grew up here and wants to age in place, or because our city is a desirable destination for retirees. Efforts and resources in this city to address the opportunities and needs of the populace across the life course are vital to eliminating ageism and promoting active engagement across generations. Thank you for reinforcing the city's commitment to keeping Wilmington a great place to live a long, engaged, and meaningful life.
Thank you. Keep up the great work. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. This time, I'd recognize Ms. Christine Karam, a member of the Minority Enterprise Development Committee, proclaiming, naming the week of October the 6th to the 10th, 2025, as Minority Enterprise Development Week. City Wilmington, North Carolina proclamation reads, whereas National Minority Enterprise Development Week, also known as National Med Week, is observed in October to recognize and celebrate the achievements and contributions of the minority business enterprise community, whereas North Carolina agencies, municipalities, and organizations host events to honor small minority and women-owned businesses, and whereas the City of Wilmington encourages and actively seeks to do business with minority and women-owned business enterprises that are known as MWBE, for those of you that are paying attention tonight, for all advertised projects, and whereas MWBE programs increases opportunities for historically underutilized businesses and promotes a business-friendly environment that promotes collaboration, creativity, accountability, and inclusion, which are in direct alignment with the city of core values as we strive to make a better Wilmington every day, and whereas creating and operating a business is a cornerstone of the American dream, and the City of Wilmington believes that dream belongs to everyone, and celebrates the accomplishments of our MWBEs and value the many ways that our communities enriched by them. Now therefore, I, Bill Saffo, on behalf of the Wilmington City Council, do hereby proclaim six, October the 6th to the 10th, 2025, the City of Wilmington's Minority Enterprise Development Week, and encourage all residents of Wilmington to get to know their local MWBEs, business owners, and work together to celebrate their many accomplishments in our community. And I just want to say, on behalf of the city, thank you for everything that you folks do every single day, and Jerry is an old friend of mine here, to do so much great work in promoting minority businesses in our community and as well as our region. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Linda. Linda.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for acknowledging Med Week. It is happening across this country. In 1983, President Ronald Reagan enacted Med Week. He made it a part of the federal government's celebration to acknowledge that minorities and women-owned businesses make great contributions to our community. We believe they're the bedrock of our community, along with small businesses. They're unique. They celebrate culture. They bring so much. They employ, and they add to our tax base. So we're excited to celebrate all of our minority and women-owned businesses this week. These individuals standing with me represent about 10 different organizations that come together each year to put this Minority Enterprise Development Week on. Remember, it doesn't stand for medical or healthcare. It stands for Minority Enterprise Development Week, and we thank you for helping us to celebrate it.
Thank you very much. We have a few photographs. Photographer, please. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. And finally, I'd like to recognize Ms. Hannah McCoy, the Outreach Coordinator of Domestic Violence Shelter. We're going to be proclaiming the name, naming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. City of Wilmington, North Carolina proclamation reads, whereas domestic violence transcends all ethnic, racial, gender, and socioeconomic boundaries, weakening the very core of our community, and whereas many persons throughout Wilmington, North Carolina, and the United States find themselves in abusive relationships and need to find a safe and empowering environment, and whereas the effects of domestic violence are far-reaching and have lasting implications on the well-being and security of individuals, families, the criminal justice system, and our community as a whole, and whereas Domestic Violence Shelter and Services Incorporated provides emergency crisis intervention, including shelter and ongoing support services in Wilmington, North Carolina for victims and survivors of domestic violence, and whereas 1,295 adults and 99 children receive direct services such as court accompaniment, advocacy, empowerment groups, and counseling, including 137 adults and 89 children who received emergency shelter through Domestic Violence Shelter and Services Incorporated in the year 2025 so far. Now therefore, I, Bill Saffo, Mayor of the City of Wilmington, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 2025 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Wilmington, and urge all citizens to enhance their efforts to work together to address the problem of domestic violence. The City Council vows to continue to partner and support Domestic Violence Shelter and Services, and this proclamation serves as a reminder to citizens of Wilmington, North Carolina, to encourage, support, and empower one another to live lives free from violence. And I just want to say, on behalf of the entire council, thank you for everything that you folks do every single day in protecting so many people. So thank you so much.
We just want to say thank you to our community. We couldn't do anything that we do without the support of you all. I can't tell you how much services that we do, donations that we receive, that really make tangible differences in people's lives. Domestic violence knows no bounds and affects every single person in our community. One in three people will experience violence from a partner at some point in their life, and if you look around you, there's a lot more than three of us in here. Our phone number is always available. You can always Google Domestic Violence Shelter and Services. Our phone number is a 24/7 crisis line that you will talk to somebody when you call. You're not going to get a machine. You're not going to get a phone list. You're going to get a human. And I would also just love to invite all of you to come to Water Street Park on October 16th for our Take Back the Night March and Rally, where we'll be doing a small march around downtown, as well as sharing some really powerful stories about domestic violence in our community. So that'll be October 16th at 6:30 at Water Street Park.
There's items one through four. Are there any items that any council member would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of this council? Motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our Public Information segment. Each, we've had 10 people that have signed up to speak with us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. So our first speaker will be Ms. Robin Morgan, believes and lives in Burgos. Ms. Morgan talks about community matters.
Hi, and thank you for your time. Salaam alaikum. I am here to reaffirm the public good. Everyone is a part of our community, and everybody matters. No one should have to earn the irreducible minimum standard of basic respect, opportunity, freedom, and life. Our public goods include such treasures as clean air and water, the Tree Canopy, public libraries, which offer freely accessible education and enrichment. It includes schools. Public goods are shared by everyone and are for all of our benefit. Public trusts are necessary investments for all communities. The erosion of these trusts of public goods are also to all of our detriment. Look at other cities where our outright hostility towards unhoused people results in architecture where nobody gets to sit down or use the bathroom in public. In this city, I thought it would be fine to take a nap in my favorite park, and I was leaf-blowered. I went, it's not, it was really upsetting, actually. I was really tired, and I loved that park, and I was like, all right, I'll take a nap on the grass. And it was really, really rude, honestly, to be leaf-blowered. I think everybody should feel safe in public. I want everybody in Wilmington to enjoy the safety and stability of belonging. The problem with ordinances like this, which further criminalize an already at-risk population, is that the message is an antisocial one. It further scapegoats nomadic folks for the problem of addiction, two things that aren't unanimous, and it says that existing in public will be met with coercion and potentially always, unfortunately, when police are involved, violence. Wilmingtonans, make Wilmington safe for everyone in it, please. Develop pre-existing empty lots to make this place more walkable, plant agroforests, invest in healthy third spaces, and vote no on this camping ban. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, Ms. Madison Morrison, speaking to us. She lives in Wilmington.
Hi, I'm Madison Morrison. I'm a resident of downtown. Wilmington is being tested on how we treat the most vulnerable among us and how we defend local democracy against growing federal overreach. City Councilman Luke Waddell's public camping ordinance criminalizes homelessness, lacks a plan for where the unhoused residents are supposed to go. Even reduced from a misdemeanor to an infraction, this still punishes people for surviving outside. The city does not currently have enough shelter or beds to support housing or offers any alternatives. This is a solution that displaces, displacement disagrees as policies. Passion and compassion in public order are not an option. They must consist together. Councilman Waddell has advocated for a $2 million beautification for Wrightsville Beach, but he has yet to provide any type of ordinance or plans when it comes to the unhoused individuals. When it comes to recent federal overreach, we consistently see that these cities have ideas of what they think an unhoused and a criminal looks like, but they have no plan of execution. As far as we see in cities like Portland and Chicago, people are just going in and rounding up individuals based on how they look and how those individuals perceive those people. So at this point, I would like everybody's attention, please, Mr. Reibenbach. At this point, what we're looking at is a power grab when it comes to more than how the unhoused people are being treated. If we allow this type of ordinance, then we are allowing federal overreach to reach inside of Wilmington, and once we allow that to happen, we are going to fall just as quickly as our federal government is falling. And I know most of you do not agree with that statement, but I can tell you the majority of the people sitting in this room with me right now do, and if you ignore that, then you are giving into what we are going to see on the federal government, and that is unacceptable.
Next speaker is Ms. Cassandra Condray, Condray, who will be speaking, who's from Castle Hain, and will be speaking to us about public safety. Condray. Condray? Is Ms. Condray here? Okay. Next speaker is Ms. Sonya Benetton Patrick, who lives in Gander Drive. Ms. Patrick.
My name is Sonya Benetton Patrick. I'm the Southeastern Chair of the National Black Leadership Caucus. Matthew 25:45 says, "Then shall they also answer him, saying, Lord, when saw we thee a hunger; did you help me? Then shall he answer them, saying, Verily I say unto you, inasmuch as ye have done it to one of these, you have done it unto me." Wilmington City Council has made efforts, however, the homeless problem is not fully resolved. There is so much work to do, because this is a national crisis. And I look at this beautiful building, and I can't get fully excited as to that's where our tax dollars went, when there are so many people, the most vulnerable and need. Now, there have been some complaints of disruptive behavior downtown, but keep in mind, there are at least 12 bars downtown within a 12-block radius, and we cannot stereotype this disruptive behavior to the homeless. And there are laws in place for disruptive behavior, so maybe this is more of an issue of public safety. Infractions are not going to resolve the issue. A homeless person could care less about infractions. Those who are not homeless could care less about an infraction. And multiple infractions can lead to criminalizing the homeless. I personally would not patronize any business that supports this ordinance. Homelessness is a moral issue and should be treated with dignity, compassion, and respect, not an ordinance. I ask you to vote against this ordinance. Thank you for listening.
Next speaker is Mr. David Bragg, who will be speaking to us about the anti-camping ordinance and lives on Barnett Avenue. Bragg.
Bragg, yes. Good evening. I had a speech prepared for the previous session of this council, but I was late in the speaking order, and luckily, pretty much every speaker that came said what I was already going to say. They've already said it again tonight. A gentleman last week, and again today, actually quoted the exact Bible passage I was going to read to you, given that you all insist on invoking the name of Christ at the beginning of every session. I bring this up because I think that the time between sessions, it's important to realize that everybody fighting this ordinance is largely saying the same thing. No matter how much lip service you all pay to the alternative options to help the unhoused, none of that will mean anything if you also vote to criminalize them. The only thing that matters, if you are listening, to your constituents, who are right here showing up to voice their displeasure. We want you to work to help our citizens, not hurt them. After the September 6th vote, Councilman Joyner was quoted as saying by WECT that Wilmington is a quote-unquote compassionate community, despite his voting in favor of the ordinance. I'm tremendously glad you feel that way. It would be nice if you acted that way. Before my wife and I moved to Wilmington, I lived in Boston for over a decade. Boston has many of the same issues with homelessness that Wilmington has, if not more, given its size. In my time in Boston, over 10 years, I never heard the kind of vitriolic language directed at the unhoused that I've heard here. Two sessions ago, a business owner and supporter of this ordinance declared that many of the unhoused downtown were simply degenerates, as if they were beyond help or compassion. I do sympathize with the fact that cleaning up human waste at your place of work is unpleasant. But having to use the bathroom and having nowhere else to do so but in public is undoubtedly worse. Having nightfall and the temperature drop and not knowing where you'll be able to sleep because we don't have enough shelters and the ones we have are already full is worse. I've had students lose housing midsemester. I've had friends that have gone without housing for extended periods of time. None of them chose to be unhoused. Life happened, and they had to play the cards they were dealt. Sometimes they were living in situations of more direct and explicit danger. Did these people deserve infractions and fines? Were they degenerates if they decided they needed to sleep in a doorway or on a public bench? Many of the speakers have talked about public intoxication and open-air drug use, but the Brooklyn Arts District is about to open an open container policy, and multiple stores downtown sell Delta 8 and 9 THC. I've seen members of this council visibly intoxicated in public. Are you degenerates, or is it just the people you find inconvenient to look at? There has been a lot of discussion about privilege as it pertains to this ordinance, but you are the city council. You have the resources and means to implement positive change. If you need to work with the county, then do so. Figure it out together. But throwing your hands up at something that makes you uncomfortable and asking the police to take care of it so you don't have to is the absolute height of privilege. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Omar Carhat. Mr. Carhat here, speaking to us about Masonboro Sound Road. Omar, I hope I pronounced your last name properly.
You did great. Good evening. My name is Omar Corbat from Masonboro area. I'm here on behalf of 115 of my neighbors who signed a petition for safe public access to the inner coastal waterways. Right now, families and kids have almost no legal ways to reach the water. We are not asking for parking or big facility, just a simple walking easement to launch a kayak or enjoy the water. Please make public access to the inner coastal waterway privileged for Wilmington, so our kids and community can enjoy it safely for generations to come. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, could he submit his...
He lives on Masonboro Sound Road.
...petition to the clerk?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Give your petition to the clerk, please.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Harold Crowe from Highland Drive, who will be speaking to us about correcting false information regarding William Gould dedication at Bellamy Mansion. See here? Next speaker is Ms. Laurel Taylor from Brandon Road, criminalizing homelessness.
Many good points have already been brought before you all again this evening. I'd just like to say, I'm wondering why so much of your time and effort is put into criminalizing a civil problem rather than finding solutions. Aren't you all just manufacturing a problem and then coming up with drastic, cruel, and inhumane solutions, such as fines and jail time? On the other hand, I understand that you are concerned about downtown appearances and safety issues, but wouldn't it be great to be known as the city which came up with creative solutions to homelessness, such as well-placed, low-barrier shelters, for instance, and more of the housing projects were just, which were just approved on Marcus Street? In closing, every person is a human being, not a disposable pawn. I hope you consider the impacts of any of your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Teresa Shively from 2750 Vance Street, talking also about homelessness. Shively here? Next speaker is Ms. Brenda Galloway from Wallington Road, talking about city ordinance. Galloway.
Good evening, Ms. Saffo, Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, and members of the Wilmington City Council. Thank you for having me today. I won't be redundant in all of our issues regarding homelessness. Everyone has spoken well on that. Ms. Saffo, you mentioned in a prior meeting that the city would locate a building and provide it to a functional, functioning nonprofit to address the homelessness here. And tonight, I would like to know where we are with that. Where are we with that? Because we are all looking for solutions. We all want to help, but just where are we with that? And with your planning committee, do you have anyone from the community on your planning committee? To have someone on your planning committee that's from the community, that's actively working with the homeless population is going to be a plus. That will keep the staff from going back and forth to the drawing board. We all want to help. We all want the same solution. So out here in the city, on the streets, we don't see a lot. We don't trust a lot, but we are working together collectively for the same solutions. You know, we know that, you say, we don't have the money? We'll find the money. So we have functioning nonprofits. I am Director of Hope, helping others proceed effectively, where our mission is to create pathways to sustainable advancement. And I would like to be a part of your initiative in seeking the best solutions. And that is what I have for you tonight. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
If there are any questions. I have a packet prepared, but I didn't bring it tonight. If you're interested...
You can share it. You can give it to the city clerk when you get it.
I'll bring it to you, and it will give you our lineup on how we plan to move forward in a building.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. So we have Mr. Colin Pretty Barnum, Voting Precinct W-27, discussing ordinance 01.
Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Colin Pretty Barnum. I live in Voting Precinct W-27. I come before you today in an effort to make a case for dismissing ordinance 01 entirely, and I urge you with all my heart to consider other options. The introduction of this ordinance is dichotomous to the goals behind the strategy to address unsheltered homelessness that was discussed between city and county officials. These goals being to increase the capacity of the Cape Fear Continuum of Care and its service providers, expand housing options, improve coordination between local governments, nonprofits, and other community partners to better serve the unsheltered population. I am aware that meetings regarding the strategy have halted due to budget decisions made by the county, but the framework for genuine change is there. Attempting to come back to the table to meet with county officials and service providers could result in helpful action. Commissioner Dane Scalise sent an email referring to the ordinance that contained the sentence, "I applaud you for making the effort to provide law enforcement with a humane and uniform tool in the toolbox." I believe that humane is an interesting choice of words here, since this ordinance's original wording classified offenses as Class III misdemeanors. A list of other Class III misdemeanor offenses was easily located, such as simple assault or battery, shoplifting, or larceny under $1,000, and disorderly conduct. To compare occupying space to the physical assault of another human being is in itself ludicrous. Based on this, this ordinance feels introduced in bad faith. The corresponding police model and donation of the discussed city properties to local nonprofits have been steps forward in previous meetings, and I would like to point out that both of these ideas can be accomplished without the passing of this city ordinance. In addition, a county ordinance was passed in February 2023 that is almost an exact replica of what is being proposed for our city's property. So I ask, what does this ordinance actually accomplish? What does it solve? How does it help? What uniform tool in the toolbox is being added? I do who my words have not given the impression that I am unaware of the good things that the city of Wilmington has done for its unhoused citizens. Mayor Sappho mentioned quite a lot that has been accomplished, and I know that the city's resources are depleted. But I would like to encourage those involved in the strategy to address unsheltered homelessness to continue to try to come back to the table instead of passing this type of legislation. We should seek to cease the bleeding of a systemic hemorrhage as opposed to devising ineffective Band-Aids. No one in this room is asking you to solve the crisis for the unhoused overnight, but it is within your power to not dehumanize members of your population along the way. Please vote against this ordinance and continue efforts with the county. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Ms. Soraya Mott Singer, who will be speaking to us from Princess Street, talking about the ordinance.
Thank you. That was a hard act to follow, but I have a few words prepared. As leaders, we are asking you to recognize that what has been brought forward with good intentions through this ordinance is not producing the desired effect. In fact, it's causing immense harm in the community, and I'm going to highlight two harms. First, it erodes faith in the effectiveness of this body and in city government. The city attorney has given multiple presentations showing that this ordinance doesn't actually offer anything new that's not covered by existing North Carolina general statute or city code. Why are you considering passing a law that doesn't do anything effective? A second harm, and more importantly, this ordinance sends a message that a whole group of people is responsible for concerns, sorry, problems in our community that they did not cause. All of us are intelligent enough to know that all the concerns downtown that you've been approached about are not caused by homeless people. Disruption is often caused by intoxicated people, people driving poorly, and people who are generally just looking for trouble. We don't know the statistics on the demographics of these behaviors. So why consider voting for an ordinance that reinforces hatred and blame of one group? We have all, each of you and each of us, been blamed, silenced, and scapegoated as members of groups that we belong to. Have you been blamed and vilified as a white person, as a gay person, as a straight person, as a black person, as a Democrat, as a Republican, as a Christian? I know you have, and we all know it's not right. And it's not effective either. Don't do this. Don't equivocate. Don't modify the ordinance and just change a couple words to continue to prey on people's prejudices. Just vote no. Please, please, just vote no.
Next speaker is Ms. Hannah Hearn from Bonham Avenue. Is Ms. Hearn here? Ms. Hearn? Okay. Ms. Sonia Moldrow from Emery Street, homelessness taking over my communities. Is Ms. Moldrow here? Ms. Bridget Tarrant? Is she here? City ordinance adding certain activity prohibited by the Chapter 6 of the city code.
Hi.
Ms. Tarrant?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Sappho and council members. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote no on the proposed ordinance adding Section 6-10, Certain Actions Prohibited on City Property, to the Wilmington city code. There are several reasons why this ordinance should not move forward. Everybody before me has said a lot of this. But first, this ordinance is redundant. The city already has multiple ordinances in place that address prohibited activities on city property. This new ordinance is unnecessary and does nothing to improve public safety. Second, it discriminates against unhoused people, raising concerns under the 14th Amendment's equal protection clause. But most importantly, it does not help a single unhoused person. This ordinance punishes people simply for existing in public spaces rather than addressing any root causes or offering solutions. If there is one positive outcome from this discussion, it's that the issue of homelessness has been brought front and center to the city council and the broader Wilmington community. Instead of passing punitive ordinances, council should focus on solutions, starting with the strategy to address unsheltered homeless, which the city and county completed in September 2024. This strategy provides a clear roadmap and is where city council's energy, leadership, and investment should be focused. Now, Mayor Sappho, you've mentioned donating city land to a nonprofit for permanent supportive housing. As somebody earlier asked, has this process begun? And then also, Resolution 2, that's on tonight's agenda, proposes investing up to $1 million in green space. That's great. We all love green space. But let's also invest in and prioritize housing. Perhaps some of that land that you're talking about purchasing could serve a dual purpose, including affordable housing. So let's not miss this opportunity. Let's reject policies that punish poverty and instead, commit to policies that uplift and house our most vulnerable neighbors. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our public information segment. Our next item of business is our public hearings. We have several public hearings this evening. First public hearing is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish a dwelling at 914 South 12th Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article 5, Chapter 16 of the city code, and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Becky Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. This item will be handled by Code Enforcement Director Brian Renner.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council. I'm Brian Renner. I'm the neighborhood compliance manager for the city of Wilmington. The property we're going to talk about is 914 South 12th Street. This is about 1,000 square foot, a single-family home built in the '50s. It is vacant, and you can see the owners there. This is an heir's property. We have been in contact with the heirs. I spoke with them, with Deborah Nixon, actually, this afternoon. This is a view from South 12th Street. The initial inspection of this property took place back in January of 2024. It was initiated by a code enforcement officer who was working in the neighborhood. The property is vacant. Went to housing code hearing in October of 2024. You can see some of the heirs that attended that hearing. The order was issued in November and expired in August of this year, and there's been known action to repair or demolish. It's my understanding, there's a variety of reasons why nothing's been done. A lot of that is the title. Then you also have the cost. The house is in very bad condition, as we'll see in a moment. And then just to demolish, they've gotten an estimate of $15,000 to demolish the house, which they were not prepared to spend. They had other priorities. So the tax value of this building back in 2024 was $44,700. Our estimated cost of repair was $78,745, which is 176%, so it's dilapidated by the city's minimum housing code. This is section of the minimum housing code outlined in the order attached to this item. So here's some photos of the house. You can see it from 12th Street. We do have a lot of issues with the roof or holes in the roof, a lot of rotten siding. The termites have eaten this house alive, and you can see some of that on the backside and all the framing that's been rotted and destroyed. This is one of the few houses I have been unable to walk inside of. The door threshold was extremely unstable, so I did not enter past the front door. And you can see here how that floor is rotted through, and then the holes in the roof and the rotten framing throughout the whole house, and more holes in the roof. So what we're looking at for tonight is approval of this ordinance. We're looking at 90 days for the owner to repair or demolish. My conversation with Ms. Nixon this afternoon indicated that the family is looking to demolish the house within those 90 days, and if they don't, we will take appropriate action based on this ordinance. So I'm here if there's any questions about our case or about this presentation.
Any questions of our city staff? Thank you, Mr. Renner. Yes, sir. Ms. Spears?
So Brian, based on the appearance of the front of this property, it's not the most pleasing thing to look at, but just upon a glance, it's boarded up. I mean, what would cause anyone from code enforcement to inspect any further?
So, one, the fact it's boarded up is kind of a sign that maybe we should look at this house a little bit closer. It's been boarded up for several years, which is another indication that we should probably look at it a little bit closer. I mean, even from here, you can see the rotten fascia on the front. You can see, you can't see it in this photo, but there are visible holes in the roof, and there have been for years, which you can see from the side of the house, which I didn't provide. But as you saw from my photos on the inside, you can see holes in the roof from there. So, you know, we don't hunt these houses down necessarily. It's more of the officers working in the neighborhood saw the condition of this house and decided to reach out to the family to try to get something done. I don't need to go into that vacant housing is housing potential, but our office really tries to reactivate these houses before we get to this point.
I'm glad you mentioned the fact of not hunting these houses down, because in the conversations that I have and the sentiments of a lot of citizens in the areas where this takes place, they feel like they're being sought out.
They are.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me. You cannot disrupt the accent. I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm going to have to ask you to please, please, go ahead.
And so...
I have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, it's just getting to be a little more familiar, and I don't want to accuse you or the team of anything that's unscrupulous. But more so the next one than this one, it's starting to look like we're just reaching and we're just grabbing in specific parts of the community. I don't know who owns this home. I do know the makeup of this community, and I also know that 1/3 of this community is poverty-stricken. But I would just, this is just my opinion, my math, whatever, but I would go on the record to say that almost 99% of these vacate, repair, or demolishes that come before us happen within a certain area in our community, and it's starting to be alarming to me.
Mr. Renner? Mr. Renner, how many houses that come before us, and we have sometimes one or two of a meeting, are complaint-driven versus...
That you see, most of the ones that council sees are complaint-driven. Percentage-wise of our case volume, proactivity is probably about 15% of proactivity, and that's of, you know, all the cases that we do, and that's including our public nuisance, grass-and-weeds cases. A lot of our housing cases, about 26% are tenant complaints. A majority of them are from neighbors. And depending on, you know, the neighborhood, that volume probably shifts on who's complaining about what. But this property, the condition of it speaks for itself, and that's, you know, I'm happy to have a larger conversation about our processes, but with this case, I think moving forward is the option.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Barnett?
I guess following along with something that Councilman Spears said, is it possible that you could get us, like I say, a map that would show us, and not now, but maybe a map that would show us where, you know, where these houses are being found? Because if it appears as if it's just targeted at a certain neighborhood or something, then we just want to make sure that that's not happening. And then along with that, adding to what Council Robin Bach said, maybe attached to that map would be neighbor-driven or complaint, you know, we found it. Because, you know, one of the things that I heard you say was that this house looked like this for two years. And my question would be, what took us so long to bring it forward?
Yeah, and as I said, this was from an officer working in the neighborhood, so the reason we didn't do anything about it prior to this would be we just didn't know about it. We didn't have a complaint.
Okay. All right. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is the property owner here? Property owner here? Not seeing the property owner. I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on this particular item.
Now it's your turn to come on up. There you go. Now, listen to me. Right to your left, there's a button that you can kind of pull down on the bottom, kind of like in the bottom, and it'll bring that down some so we can see your face and...
Oh, there we go.
There you go. Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
The first thing that I want to say is, I feel like we have an idea that a lot of the homeless population in Wilmington is people that's not from here, but I just want to let you guys know that I'm from here. Born and raised, I actually aged out of foster care in New Hanover County. So I think I have a unique look at a lot of the stuff that's happening in our city that a lot of us don't have. But to speak on the issue of the house, I'm from South Side. I was raised in Houston Moore, so I see firsthand that a lot of people in our community, they are being harassed about their homes. My mother and her husband, they own a house on Russell Alley, right off Worcester Street, and I cannot tell you how many times they have been back and forth in court with the city. If it's not their dogs, it's the roof. If it's not the roof, they need to board it up. And they were served a notice to vacate or fix the premises, and they were estimated some $30,000. What average American has that in their bank account to be able to save their property? None of them. And another thing that I noticed is Wilmington does this very sneakily because... And another thing that I noticed is Wilmington does this very sneakily, because you guys did this to the Glen across the street from UNCW. Y'all took it after the hurricane so that UNCW could buy that property. And I just think that it's, it's happening all over Wilmington, and I think when there's a means to an end for someone to want something, they don't stop at nothing, and I don't think it's just, and especially on the South Side. If you walk through the North Side, you can see where this happened already. And if you don't know the meaning of gentrification, I would just deplore you to get familiar with what it means, because, like I said, as somebody that was born and raised on the South Side, I see it, and I know you see it. Thank you for your time today.
Spears.
Yeah, go on.
Go ahead, Ms. Spears.
I agree with everything you said, but one thing, we didn't take the Glen. We don't own the Glen. The Glen was damaged from Hurricane Florence. Florence, Hurricane Florence. I don't know who owns it anymore. We could actually use it to be rebuilt, but we didn't take it. I promise you that, so.
I can answer that question, Councilman Spears. The same property owner still owns it.
Okay. So the same people still own it, it just was, I guess, too much for them to try to rehab it, and so they bulldozed it. But we don't own it. We get accused of a lot of things, and I agree with you about some of the stuff that you accuse them about, but I'm a defender on this one. Yeah, I was just wanting you to share your name, your name for the record, so we know who. And the other thing is, anytime you got concerns like that, you can bring it to us. You don't have to come to this setting to bring it to us, okay?
I was actually here to speak about the homeless issue.
Right, okay, we understand.
I was supposed to also say thank you for the work that you guys do at the State Department, because that is the reason why I know that you guys are there. And I appreciate what you guys do there.
Yeah. If you'll come up to the mic, so you may be saying something that other people may need to hear. And your daughter is beautiful. Uh-oh. All right, quickly, quickly get your son in there.
My name's Terielle Hall. And I was initially here to speak about the homeless issue. I'm actually a resident at The Good Shepherd in town, so I know all the good that you guys do there, so I do appreciate that. Hold on, baby.
And that's, okay.
We ran into some, obviously, lifestyle issues, and which brought us to The Good Shepherd. So I do know that you guys are, hold on, baby. So I do know that you guys are actively trying in some ways, but again, just to repeat what someone else said, we're not degenerates, and I hate that I have to feel like I have to humanize myself, but we wouldn't want to be sent to jail just for trying to take care of us and our kids.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay. You can speak. Here we go, Mrs. Maxwell's coming up.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members. My name is Deborah Dix Maxwell, a Wilmington resident, current president of North Carolina NAACP, and former president of New Hanover NAACP. Mr. Renner, glad to see you still around. It's been a while. What I would like for staff to do in preparing what Mayor Pro Tem requested is also look at how many of these homes are heirs' property. That has been a disastrous issue for the gentrification of this city, is heirs' property. Also, when you look at neighborhood complaints, we need to look at the rising value of that neighborhood. I'm requested to sell my North Side family residence every other week with a photo. No, we're not selling. This is an issue that has been around too long. If city can go with others and see about offering on a quarterly basis landlord's workshops, how to keep your house, how to keep your title, because that's a lot of what's going on with people. And that's regardless of color, because this is home, so I've got friends of all colors who grew up in Wilmington. And if they could not do that, ask county to help, legal aid. The Guardian has a trust that's working on things like that. But that would help deflate the number of heirs' property issues, especially as that has been an issue when we have storms. People can't get repairs because it's heirs' property, and you have to prove who owns it in order to get the repair through FEMA, which we don't know what'll happen the next time. So I thank you for allowing me to speak. I did not come here and plan to say anything to y'all at all except to say aye. And my grandson's with me, so he can learn about civic education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Spears, what you said was what I was thinking before you said it, about how it seems like every city council meeting, there's always a home or two or three that comes up that needs to be demolished after a certain, certain time period, 90 days and so forth. So to me, this is, it's a nefarious design on people's property. If it's dilapidated for whatever reason, it seems like there's vultures out there, developers out there, there are this vermin and scoundrels who seek to gobble up every little bit of property from the original owners of the property, and they have no qualms about doing so. And it's their only desire is to take a home that was worth $100,000 and jack it up to about $500,000, $600,000, like on the North Side of town, over there on Red Cross Street, same-sized roof store. There's two or three homes over there, and their value was $489,000. Now, that's a bit pricey, I would say. Not to denigrate residents of the North Side of town, Red Cross Street, etc., 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 but that's somewhat exorbitant. This is the classic case of gentrification. Gentrification is affecting this city, this community, as well as other cities, communities all over this great land of ours. So the gentrification has to be put to a cease. To homeowners out there, heirs, please, I implore you, I beg you, please, pay your taxes on your home, both city and county taxes, do whatever you have to do, keep the property in your family, because that's important. Homeownership equals citizenship. You're nothing more than a slave if you have to rent, or to beg, borrow, steal, or sleep on somebody's couch. And me, I ain't one to be no slave, so I hope others feel the same way as I. So pay your taxes, take care of your property, and don't let these money-grubbing scoundrels take one more home from you. Keep your homes, kick the gentrifiers out of this state, out of this county, out of the city, and let Wilmington be made great again. Say la.
Just so you'll know, if you, and I see you at all our meetings and appreciate that, but if you'll remember, when Mr. Renner brings these to us, this council, without any exception, when they come up and we've got 60 to 90 days, we ask them, what do you think it would take? Well, we need a year. We give them that. We never back off. We, we don't hold their feet to the fire on that, because you're talking about people coming in and buying it. They can't buy the property and get clear title to it either, because they have to deal with the heirs. That's, that's been a problem on, at this council level, dealing with these types of properties, as long as I've been up here, because Grandma and Granddaddy had the property, and they passed away, and they've got children, and the children have children, and they don't even live here. In Mr. Renner's office, they bend over backwards trying to reach these people so they can get together and agree to the repairs. And we have, we have programs in the city, there are nonprofits like Warm, and we have rental, I mean, we have grants and loans within the city that people can use, but there has to be clear title, clear deed to the property. And that's, that is, you hit the nail on the head, that is a real problem. We didn't create it, but it's legal. It has to be done the legal way, and these people that come before us, they get it, they understand, but we have never, tonight is the first time I can, in my memory, that Mr. Renner or our code enforcement people have said this property, even the, even the homeowners have said they want to tear it down. I don't, I can't remember when we have torn a house down. We just don't do it. So we do try. So I just wanted to address what you said, sir. Thank you.
I just have a question to clarify what you just shared with us. If my memory serves me correct, at this last meeting, there was a family that asked for a year to work on their home, to improve it, and my memory is that they weren't given a year. Can anyone fact-check that for me or confirm that?
Council's ordinance that they passed was for six months. However, if they're making significant progress, we're obviously going to work with them through that process. That's how we do almost all of these cases, is we get forward momentum using this process, and then we continue to work with them through it.
Yeah, I just think it's important that we speak factually when we're talking about what efforts are being made to help these homeowners.
Clerk has indicated to me that, when you please come up, just state your name for the record and where you live, that's all. Ma'am, you want to come up?
My name's Maddie Wills, and I live in Wilmington. Good evening, members of the city council and the public. My name is Maddie Wills, and I am a certified human rights consultant, and I'm dressed for my gym job, but that's what I also do. My area of specialty is in inclusion and ensuring that policies and practices uphold the dignity, equality, and participation of all individuals, including those most marginalized. I am speaking today in strong opposition to the proposed ordinance criminalizing homelessness.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but we've already.
These issues are relevant. They're both related to poverty.
We're talking about this particular property. I'm sorry, ma'am.
At a certain time in the event, may I please speak?
No, we've already had the public information segment, but if you want to speak.
That's okay, it's in your email.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Just if you want to speak specifically about this property, that's fine.
Okay, specifically about this property, I am speaking about the property, and I want to let you know about some ways that it would violate several constitutional and human rights protections under both US and North Carolina law, as it targets a specific audience of individuals. The First Amendment, the right to free expression, panhandling, and peaceful solicitation constitute protected speech, okay, so.
We're talking about the House. I understand about the Constitution, but could you please speak specific to the House?
I absolutely can.
Yes, ma'am.
Basic human dignity principles recognized under international human rights law, which applies to people who are within poverty, who might have to have a home like this. That guarantees the right to have their housing in whichever shape or form, and the freedom of degrading treatment. So I would constitute this taking of the housing, and as we've mentioned, some gentrification issues, I would constitute that definitely as degrading treatment to that family. There are laws that seek to protect this, and you are not abiding by it. True inclusion requires compassion, evidence-based policy, and investment in supportive housing, not criminalization. I urge you to think twice about all of the things that we've spoken about tonight, and continue to work towards sustainable solutions that affirm every resident's right to exist safely in our community.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Any further questions from council? Madam clerk, have you received any additional comments?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. Yes, yes, sir.
Brian, you mentioned that you have talked with the heirs, and you talked with them today?
Correct.
And they, they're interested in it, they're, they want to demolish it, I mean.
Ideally, I think that they would, would have loved to repair the house, however, its condition is beyond really the scope of salvaging and the cost, obviously, as well. They are looking to demolish the house and then hopefully build a new house in its place.
Okay. And then I understand you to say that when we do this kind of procedure, it kind of encourages the family to, to do, work together so they can save the house or do whatever they need to do.
Correct. There are countless cases that city council does not see.
Sure, sure. Okay. All right.
Very good. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council in respect to the item. We have a motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Waddell, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH 2, which is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish a dwelling at 1720 Ann Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article 5, Chapter 16 of the City Code, and directing that it notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. Again, I'd like to recognize City Manager Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Again, Mr. Brian Renner.
Good evening again. The second house we're going to talk about is 1720 Ann Street. It's about a 1,300 square foot, single-family house built in the 30s. The property is vacant. The owner is Sky High REI LLC, and the registered agent is Ryan Groff. I actually have been in communication with Mr. Groff as early as today, and this property is pending sale, just so everybody's on the same page. I've spoken with the buyer, they're aware of this hearing as well, and they have a plan in place, which we can talk about here in a minute. So this is the front view of the property. So this initial inspection took place in June of 2023. It was from a neighbor complaint. Property is vacant. We took administrative hearing in July of 2024. Nobody attended that hearing. That order was issued in August, and the order expired in November of 2024. The owner had previously stated an intent to sell the property. He had, I believe, had it under contract a few times. He had attempted to have contractors replace it. He had a situation where a contractor took his money and ran, he said, so there has been a lot happening with this property over the years, and there's been no real action, though, to take repair or demolition. Tax value is $63,400, estimated cost of repair $71,000. That's 113%, so it's dilapidated by city's minimum housing code, section of the minimum housing code outlined in the findings of fact. So here's just some photos of it. The big problem with this house is the roof. There was this dormer that was built improperly and without permits. Here you can see just some rotten siding on the side, missing rear steps, and some more problems here on the front porch. The inside of the house is gutted. There are sections of the floor that are, that are pretty unstable, and here you can see some rotten of the floors in here. Just showing the inside of the house. And then you can see the issues with the roof from the inside.
Excuse me, Mr. Renner, we have a question here from Mr. Joyner.
Yes.
I was just getting in line to speak when he finished, but I'll go ahead and interject now. I was just curious, have they pulled any permits, the new owners, or the prospective buyers? Has anybody pulled any permits to do any changes to the house?
They have not pulled permits yet, so my conversation with them, they actually own a house on the same block, that their, their plan is to, shortly after they close, which is actually tomorrow. actually tomorrow, they're going to obtain permits, and they've given me their game plan to have the house permitted within a couple months, and then be well under renovation by the time this 90 days expires. So, once they have their permits, we're going to work with them beyond that. This section of the floor completely missing as well. So, as I said, we're looking for approval of this ordinance. We're going to work with the new buyer, should that sale go through, which we're expecting it to, and then allow them to renovate this house. But should that fall through, we want to be in a position to take care of this property if we need to. So, I'm here if there's any questions.
Any questions from council?
The Ryan guy is the owner of the property?
That's correct. He's the owner of the LLC that owns it, yeah.
Okay, and he's, and he's already made the negotiations to sell?
Correct. I've seen the contract.
Okay, all right. Now, I know you've bought some of those to us, and sometimes they like plan to sell, then they don't sell, you know, I've seen that before, so, but you're kind of-
I'm expecting, the prospective buyer owns a house just a few houses down, actually, so we're hopeful that that'll go through, and that they'll renovate this house.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Is the property owner here? Not here. Mr. Renner?
No, when I spoke with him this afternoon, he's in Raleigh, he didn't indicate that he would be here.
Okay, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wants to speak on this item, Madam Clerk, have you received any additional? Come forward, ma'am. State your name for the record and where you live.
Ryan Beecham, 25th Street. The lack of livability of this house is pretty significant, yeah? I think that it really speaks to the livability of this town, and, you know, I know we're speaking to this house, and again, it's pretty well dilapidated, which is true of a lot of the houses that we've seen. I've been at these meetings before, I know you've seen me, and it is connected to the livability crisis that we have in this town. Demolishing the house and letting somebody rebuild does also play into the gentrification that was built, that was brought up earlier, and I'm really urging you all to put these dots together about the livability of this town. We've talked about affordable housing, we've talked about changing things so that things are better for constituents, but affordable housing is different than housing that is affordable. Talking about housing that is affordable would address an issue like this. I am still speaking to this house. If we had income that actually reflected, excuse me, if we had a livable wage in this town, and not a minimum wage of $725, $725, that can't get you anything. I understand that you guys don't control that, but if affordable housing isn't also connected to income, the basic income that you can have in this community, we will continue to have houses like these. We will continue to have houses like these. I live in a house with four other people. It is going to this, in this direction, because it is really difficult to live in this city. We must think of better, more creative solutions that actually address the reality of what it means to live in Wilmington. If you can't live on $725 in this town, what are you guys doing? You are our representatives. We cannot change the minimum wage, and I know you can't either, but you can respond to it. You can respond in ways that are responsible, that help people keep their houses in livable condition, because this is unacceptable, and it's systemic. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but they're responding, 85% of what they're responding to is neighbor complaint. That's huge, that's a big deal. They don't even have to go look.
Ma'am, do you want to, we're trying to save the house.
But this isn't saving the integrity of what it means to be affordable, for housing to be affordable here.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're talking about this specific, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional commentary?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Waddell, second by Councilmember Rivenmark. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our ordinance. Item O1 is an ordinance adding 6-10 cert actions prohibitive on city property to Chapter 6, Article 1 of the Wilmington City Code. This time, I'd like to recognize the city attorney, Ms. Everhart, Ms. Everhart, and this is also being heard on a second reading.
Yes, sir, because this is second reading, and actually, a second second reading, we don't have an additional presentation for you, but we're glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ben, this is a second reading, and given the robust discussion and deliberation over the last several months, both by members of the community and the public, and of course, all of us up here, I'm going to go ahead and move approval of the ordinance.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, Councilmember Waddell. Do you have a second to that? Second by Councilmember Rivenmark, discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item passes 4-3. It brings us to our next item of business, which is item O2, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriations of $8,896. $896 from a Cape Fear River Watch donation to the City Stormwater, yeah, City Stormwater Fund. Please ask these people to please, disrupting this meeting, please. Please, please, please take them out.
Shake, shake.
Take them out, please, yeah, please ask them out.
Fund the programs that we have-
Please, please, please ask this disruption of the meeting. Please ask them to please to leave the meeting.
Also, all of you sell out of all of them.
Thank you, thank you.
The show is horrible.
Thank you, take them out, please.
People don't care about here. We couldn't stop them here. Hi, you're all here, and I'm saying, yeah. Don't like freaking, the people don't like you.
Okay. Next item of business is just item O2, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriations of $8,896 from a Cape Fear River Watch donation to the City Stormwater Operating Fund, and the order to purchase Aqua Real-Time Algae Tracker to Greenfield Lake. I'd like to recognize the city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This item will be presented by Erin Beckner, our Assistant Director of our Public Works Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council. This item accepts a $8,896 donation from Cape Fear River Watch to purchase an Aqua Real-Time Algae Tracker for Greenfield Lake. This new sensor will expand our ability to monitor water quality in real time, supporting proactive and long-term lake management. This supports the city's commitment to environmental stewardship and protecting our local waterways. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from staff? What are the wishes of council in respect to the item? Yes, sir, Mr. Joyner?
Sorry, could you tell us a little bit more about, once we have that data collected, what we do with it?
Sure, so, the intent is to track trends over time in the lake, and try and use it to predict some of the algae issues we've had in the past, so we'll use it for some long-term planning for some of our maintenance activities in the lake.
Yes, sir.
We don't have anything doing that now?
Nothing that tracks in real time. Historically, we'll go out and take a water sample, and send it to a lab, and get it analyzed, and then get that data back, but this is real, you can log in and look at it right now on a computer, and get the data in real time.
Okay, cool, all right. May I raise your vote? Okay, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Item O3A, which is an ordinance approving appropriations to the Building Improvements Capital Projects Funds for the Parks Operation Facility project in the amount of $4,297,100. And then we have a company resolution of awarding a construction contract to JM Thompson Company of Cary, North Carolina, for the Parks Operations Facility in the amount of $11,971,273. This time, I'd like to recognize city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This item will be presented by Public Works Director, Dave Mace.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. Before you tonight, there's an appropriation ordinance placing funds in our capital project for the Parks Operations Facility, as well as a resolution to award a contract for the construction of that facility. I'm going to briefly go over the project, some of this information you've heard before, but I did want to reiterate some of it as we're getting ready to award construction contract. The existing facility that our Parks Maintenance folks work out of right now is at 1702 Burnett Boulevard. This is a converted house that has been used as an office. The house was built in 1923. It's got various covered storage structures, lean-to that was converted into a mechanic shop. 2017, we did a space need study to evaluate what we had, and also what we would need to redevelop the property, and we developed program requirements for our urban forestry group, park maintenance group, amenity maintenance, as well as the folks that keep our right-of-ways mode. I'm sure you can see by the tasks that these, the folks that operate out of this facility complete for us, that there's a lot of important tasks that go on at this facility. The current facility is situated in a floodplain, so they have to relocate every time we have a major storm event. It's a hodgepodge of accumulation of different structures. It's obsolete. We found out along the way that NC DOT Project U5734, the alignment of that project will impact this site. Several meetings ago, y'all heard consideration for how DOT is going to acquire this property. This new facility that we're asking for award of construction solves these concerns, and it is adjacent to the city's current operation complex on River Road. The star on this map at the top shows the site that was acquired in 2020 for the construction of the facility, and you can see there in the middle of the picture, that is adjacent to the city operations complex on River Road. There's a general layout of the project as it is to be constructed. I'll just highlight a couple of things. Item number one, right there in the center, is the main building. It's about a 15,000 to 16,000 square foot workshop and office building that is the main structure on the site. Item number five there is also a fairly important structure that will be a covered storage area for a lot of the vehicles and equipment that these folks use on a day-to-day basis. This is a seven-and-a-half acre site at the corner of River Road and Melton as well. Here's a general elevation provided by our architect for what the front of that facility will look like, the main building. For your information, before we went to bid, we did everything we could to try and control costs. The Parks Department has agreed to do the landscaping themselves, take some pride in the property before they move in, so that was something that they are going to be funding. The greenhouse that is planned for the property was reduced in size to control costs, removed, so we removed the third bay, it's only a two-bay greenhouse. We changed the flooring from polished, excuse me, from terrazzo to polished concrete. Several things were included as alternate bid items, so that we could evaluate their costs and decide whether or not that was worthwhile to proceed with them. Light shelves, sunshades, the roof over some bulk storage bins, and then there's some other minor items listed there about the fencing, wall coatings on the restrooms, as well as they're going to be providing some wainscoting material from trees that are harvested here locally by our urban forestry group. Project budget is a little more than $10.5 million. We've already expensed money for the space need study, acquiring the land, and hiring an architect, leaving the total available budget a little over $9 million. Our January 25 cost estimate was $10.238 million. At our May 2026 budget work session, we presented to you and identified a little more than $2 million in unused and deferred projects funds. We wanted to do that before we went to bid, to make sure that we could identify the funds that matched the estimate that we had. The bid results, it was a very competitive bid. I haven't been able to say this before, we received nine bids. That's pretty remarkable. We almost had 10, but we opened nine bids on July 15. There's about a $2 million difference between the lowest and the highest bid. JM Thompson Company of Cary was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at $11.782 million. This is about 15% more than the January estimate. We went back to the architect and their cost estimating subconsultant, and asked, what's the difference? What changed between January and July? And these were the answers that we got. Tariffs have had an increase, seen an increase of 5% to 7% on mechanical electrical equipment. Steel has seen an increase between 11% to 20% per ton, and they've also seen just a general cost escalation of about 1.5% per quarter. So, the award that we're asking you to make tonight, the base bid amount was $11.782 million. We're including alternate 2A, which includes heavy-duty paving around the back of the building, which is basically the workshop area. We feel like that's an important add. We costed it out separately to see if we could perhaps conduct that work ourselves, and that is not work that we can conduct ourselves. Alternate 7 includes rooftop photovoltaics or solar panel system. We've done some value engineering with the contractor. The first item there is to delete the third-party lead consultant that would be hired by the contractor as a requirement in the contract. We're suggesting that quite simply because this contractor has a significant amount of experience in doing lead projects, and we don't feel like it's necessary for that expense for them to hire a third-party consultant. And secondly, we suggested some changes to the masonry veneer that resulted in about $46,000 in savings. The contract award amount is $11,971,273. Also included to get the project across the finish line, there are expenses, CFPUA connection fees, tree mitigation, inspection and testing, as well as IT infrastructure. I do want to point out, and I apologize for not including this in your cover letter, but we are also benefiting from a grant that was awarded about a year, a little over a year ago. Our EECBG grant included about $20,000 to go towards solar panels on the roof of this building, so we're taking credit for about $20,000 towards that element in the construction. The appropriation includes a 5% contingency for construction, and it also includes 370, about $375,000 to purchase the greenhouse structure as a separate contract. So, the project total is right at $13.3 million. Just to summarize where the appropriations are coming from, it's about $1.4 million in closeouts from previous projects, $256,000, excuse me, in capital balances, as well as a little more than $2.5 million in additional debt capacity. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, the property where the existing structure is that we're moving out of and moving to the new one, are we, do we intend to surplus that property and sell it, or is it already surplus?
It's already been surplus-
And under contract, right?
-to DOT. I'm not sure about the status of the contract, but I think it was in, there was an August meeting where Mr. Parsley came before you about that subject property. an August meeting where Mr. Parsley came before you about that subject property.
Do we intend to use those those funds to kind of offset construction costs is probably my, I'm not sure it all flows through, but that may be a question for the city manager.
Sure. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mace, happy to speak to that, Councilmember Waddell. So the four point two-five million dollars that is coming to the city from N C D O T for the sale of a portion of the existing property, the intention is to put that towards retiring the variable rate debt that is on the acquisition of this property. And then there is still a portion of the property that is left because N C D O T did not need the entire parcel. We do expect that we will be surplusing that in the future. There's some talk that we might get an unsolicited bid for that. If so, that would go through the upset bid process. If that doesn't result, then once we have a confirmed timeline of when we would be vacating this property, excuse me, the current property, then we would be looking to surplus the other.
Right. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Barnett?
I remember when this project came to us a while back, and one of the things that you had some concern about was like gas. Do you remember that? Like gassing up the trucks and all that kind of stuff? Did that?
So the 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 current operations complex on River Road has the the biggest fueling depot for city operations. So where they are right now on Burnett Boulevard, a lot of their vehicles and equipment have to travel down to the operations center in order to get fuel. They do have some off-road fuel that they, you know, carry in a truck, and they can fuel tractors and stuff like that out in the field. This project, once it's in op, once it's constructed, I mean, the, they're essentially right next door to the, to their gas station, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I remember that. Spears?
Dave, I just want to give you some kudos. Where I come from, we say props. I just want to give you some props for thinking of how we could mitigate some costs for ourselves by doing some some stuff ourselves, even if we couldn't. I I believe that is a mindset that we, I've been preaching it ever since I've been on council, you know, I was using the I word, innovation, innovation, innovation. But I also believe that, you know, if we can, as the city of Wilmington, we we are a well-run machine, so there are some things that we pay other people to do for us that I believe we should do ourselves. So I just want to give you kudos for that, and hopefully that pans out in the future.
Thank you, sir, much appreciated. There was a a large and lengthy effort to make sure that we were trying to do that to the extent, the fullest extent possible, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. So I'm going to ask for the for the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance, which is the four million two oh nine, which I've already read into the record, what are the wishes of council in respect to item oh three A? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Joyner, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Ryan Marks, second by Councilmember Andrews. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. And then let's write item oh three B, which is the resolution awarding the construction contract to J M Thompson Company of Cary, North Carolina for the parks operations facility in the amount of eleven million nine hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars. What are the wishes of council in respect to the resolution? We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to item oh four A, which is an ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds in the amount of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand twenty-three dollars from the tree mitigation fund for the year twenty twenty-six tree planting contract, which is the ordinance. And then item oh four B is the resolution awarding twenty twenty-six citywide tree planting contract to Thorpe Landscapes of Wilmington L L C for the planting of six hundred and forty-one trees in the amount of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand and twenty-three dollars. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This item will be presented by Parks and Recreation Director, Amy Beatty. And I will just point out for the record that there was a mistake in the cover letter title amount of this, but the amount that the mayor read, the five seventy-seven oh twenty-three, is correct.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. As the title states, this ordinance would appropriate the five hundred and seventy-seven thousand and twenty-three dollars of tree mitigation funds to support a contract with Thorpe Landscaping to plant six hundred and forty-two trees within city public rights-of-way and parks. For the public's benefit, tree mitigation funds are collected from developers through a pay and loofah and are used to support tree preservation and new tree planting within the city. Your packet contains a map of where the new trees will be planted, as well as a list of species. You'll note that most of the plantings occur in the nineteen forty-five corporate areas, and there's a few reasons for this. First of all, this area has the most public right-of-way, and so there are the most opportunities for new tree plantings in this area. Secondly, this area has the oldest trees in the city, so as those trees reach the end of their life cycle and need to be removed because they are diseased and dying, that presents new opportunities for new tree planting. And then lastly, council may recall, last year you appropriated funds for a citywide stump removal contract, and some of those dated all the way back to trees that were moved from Hurricane Florence. A lot of those were in this area, and so that also presents an opportunity for plantings in that corporate limits, old corporate limits. The contract includes an eighteenth-month survival guarantee. The trees will be watered during that period by the contractor, and if any trees do not survive, they will be replanted with the same size and species. I'll try and answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? It's always good to plant trees, especially five hundred, half a million dollars worth. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Avonbar, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Avonbar, second by Councilmember Joyner. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Now we're going to go to the resolution, which is oh four B, which is the resolution awarding the citywide tree planting contract to Thorpe Landscapes of Wilmington L L C for the planting of six hundred and forty-one trees in the amount of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand and twenty-three dollars. What are the wishes of council? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item oh five A, which is an ordinance to appropriate nine million one hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars to the fleet fund to purchase replacement of eight hundred M H Z radios and annual technology subscription, which is the ordinance. And then item oh five B is the resolution authorized, city manager, to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions to purchase radios for all applicable city departments and divisions. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're right.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, appreciate being able to bring this item forward. What we have before you tonight is a request to essentially purchase all new Motorola radios for all of our staff slightly earlier than what we expected. This was anticipated to be an F Y twenty-seven budget item, but in conversations with the police department, it has become clear that we need to move this forward a bit more quickly. They are experiencing some significant issues with the reliability of their radios. That includes spontaneous failures of the radios when they're out in the field. I want to be very clear that that has not resulted in any loss of a level of service. It has been while they are, say, proactively out patrolling or doing other work, but the the radios are at the end of their life cycle, and there have been some changes in the radio network that are causing issues with the encryption keys to be lost. That officer then needs to bring the radio back to the station. It has to be manually reprogrammed, and that is obviously not something that is acceptable as part of their daily work. Speaking of the changes to the radio network, that is on a statewide basis, they have updated the radio system, and our radios are no longer compatible with that statewide system. So if state agencies were to need to come in and speak on our radio networks, we would not be able to have interoperability and good communication with those other agencies. So because of those issues, we essentially need to fast-forward what was going to be part of next year's budget. In speaking with our budget and finance departments, they put together a plan to be able to utilize the funds that we're waiting for next year as part of our fleet fund to afford this. We would also be taking some funds out of our fund balance and then taking out a loan in the spring, limited obligation bond, to essentially pay back our fund balance for about two point six million dollars that we would be using to be able to fully pay cash to replace all of the radios right now. So it allows us to move forward comfortably. We've worked with our financial modeling and our debt capacity to make sure that this is something that we're very comfortable doing. But in moving forward with the entire project at this time, we were able to negotiate about a half million dollar savings with Motorola. That would be realized by replacing all radios today. So happy to answer any questions, but that is why we are before you at this time and not having this be something that would typically be part of a budget process.
Mr. Joyner?
I'm with you on the urgency and the need for this to happen relatively quickly. I I hear you talking about the need for the hardware. Is there also a software costing component to this, and what does that look like?
Sure, it's it's all one package from Motorola, and so there is a subscription service that does come with the new radios. Right now, every single radio that the city owns, if it needs to be updated with its programming, it has to be manually worked on. That literally takes hundreds of man-hours. If it needs to be sent to Motorola, there is then an additional cost of, I think it was around sixteen hundred dollars, just to, just for them to touch a radio if it takes more work than what we're able to do in-house. All of that gets wiped out with the new radio system. Everything is able to be completely remotely updated, and so at any point in time, if there's an update that needs to happen, it is able to go out over the network. Everything is automatically updated, and they're good to go. So it will be a massive, massive labor savings by also moving to this new system.
Okay, thank you. And then when you're talking about the portion of the funds that are going to come from our fleet fund, does that in any way touch our, I don't know if it's outstanding or where we are on it, I would like an update on where we are on it with our request for proposals for a fleet transition study.
I will check with staff.
I see Mr. Mace shaking his head no, which is a good sign.
And and I'm seeing our finance director, Ms. Wayne, shake her head no.
Thank you.
Mr. Rumbor?
Understood that it's coming from different pockets of money, but you mentioned the the undesignated fund balance. What percentage does that take this down to? Even if it's only for a short period of time, it's important.
Martha, are you able to speak to that specific number?
I do not have the specific number. We're still going through our final numbers, but what I can say is we will be above and we will be within our fund balance limit. So that the policy that we have set for the general fund, we will be in compliance with that.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I know we have a certain percentage, or we try to keep a certain amount in our undesignated fund balance for rainy day, and we don't like to get too far below that, or we get a letter.
We we will not be going below the minimum threshold for our fund balance. So we are still in the process of going through our external audit, so we don't have finalized numbers for June thirty, but we have looked at projections, and we have looked at the debt model and where our numbers stand, and we feel comfortable that we will not be going below our fund balance policy.
And this will be reimbursed in the spring?
In the spring, yes. We are planning to go, move forward, and we have already been speaking with our financial advisors, and we are planning to do a limited obligation bond in the spring.
I'm not against this at all, I've just got concern about that savings account.
Yeah, Finance and Budget did a great job modeling out everything and working with all of our advisors to make sure that we were very comfortable being able to respond to the sense of urgency without compromising our financial stability.
Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, Ms. Hawk, again, I applaud the effort to get our folks what they need, certainly. Eight hundred radios, do we have, it says all applicable city departments, so do we have a delineation of of how many are going to each one? And then as a follow-up to that, would there be any benefit from a cash outlay standpoint to, you know, get them for the, get them for W P D if W F D needs them too, and then and then phase in the others at a later date?
Sure, great question. And just to clarify, eight hundred megahertz is the type of radio. We're looking to purchase five hundred and sixty-four radios. The vast majority of our radios, I don't have the exact breakdown, but the vast majority of this is for police. They have by far the most radios across all city departments because the the fire department is able to use theirs in their trucks, and so they don't have all of the portables and everybody having an individual radio the way that they do in the police department. So we did look at potentially staggering it. That was one of the items that we looked at, and because of the cost savings that we're able to get if we go ahead and purchase that five hundred thousand dollar reduction in the total cost from Motorola, if we go ahead and replace everything at this time is what made it, the, made the most sense for us to move forward right now with the entire package. We were expecting in terms of a budget placeholder for F Y twenty-seven that this would be a ten million dollar endeavor, and so the fact that we're closer to nine point one, still a lot of money, but that is a notable cost savings.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Ms. Spears?
Becky, how long have we been incompatible with the state?
I will refer to our radio experts. When did they start making the the transition? They started making the transition over four years ago, but it was, it was staggered. It's it's been staggered across the state, so we have not been unable to talk to them for four years.
My apologies. They keep pushing them back. Smaller agencies can't afford to do it as well. We're one of the largest agencies that have not done it. January twenty twenty-six is the final cutoff. So July of this past year, twenty twenty-five, they started changing channels, and we just won't know if we communicate or not.
So how, what's the odds of us being incompatible again, and how soon?
I can't speak to that. Motorola and whoever runs the Viper system, they they can, I don't, I don't, I don't foresee it happening. That's the newest technology that's out there. That's where we're at.
We we know how quick technology changes, right?
It does, it does.
Right, and and so did we even weigh in a leasing option with Motorola, or the the ability to to move forward a little quicker, a little cheaper next time?
So radios last, tend to last seven to ten years before they need replacement, depending on how heavily they're utilized. We did also look at lease options through Motorola, and we priced out those, the total cost of ownership compared to an outright purchase, and it made more financial sense for us to do an outright purchase than to finance it because of the additional cost that would come through a leasing option.
Okay, thank you, Becky.
Mr. Barnett?
Probably not really a bright question, but what happens to the old Motorola's?
They, they're, they're at the end of their life, they're.
They're not good for anything. Can't like donate them to a school or?
I think they collect dust and get surplus, but there's, there's no, there's really no use for them because they're not compatible with the radio network anymore. And and a lot of them are ready to be traded in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hawk.
Thank you.
Okay, ready to vote on the ordinance? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Avonbar, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to the resolution. What the resolution reads, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions to purchase radios for all applicable city departments and divisions, where the wishes of council. We have a motion by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Joyner. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our resolutions. R1 is a resolution in support of addressing the accessibility and affordability of early childhood education in the state of North Carolina. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Andrews. Ms. Andrews?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have some representatives here from NC Child to introduce this item.
We have a group here this evening from NC Child. We're a statewide children's advocacy nonprofit. We have a couple of staff members here as well, Dorian and Amy, who live here in the Wilmington area. So we are North Carolina's only statewide children's nonprofit focused on a range of different issues, but one of our big priorities is early childhood education. And so the reason why we're here this evening is a resolution in favor of North Carolina taking further action to invest and to prioritize the issue of early childhood. Childcare is probably an issue that you hear a lot about out in the community. Everywhere we go, we hear about it, from county managers, from commissioners, from economic developers, and from parents and family members as well. We believe that it should be a priority issue in the General Assembly in Raleigh, and that's why we're trying to work with local governments to pass a resolution, just encouraging them to keep it in mind with everything that's going on right now in our state. So we're going to keep it brief. I'm going to pass it to our research director, Neil, and to our policy analyst, Leanna, to kind of sum up what the resolution does.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers for having us here today and hearing us out. As Michael said, I'm the Director of Policy and Research at NC Child, and want to talk to you a little about what we see early childhood education and childcare doing for Wilmington and for communities in North Carolina. So extensive research, right, has shown that early childhood education really makes a real difference in the lives of our children, leading to better grades, higher lifetime earnings, and a greater chance of success throughout a child's life. A lot of research that we've done recently and folks across the country have done as well also shows that early childhood education really makes a difference for local economies. And that's kind of really at the center of the resolution and what we're asking you to pass here today. Without access to childcare, parents can't work, and businesses lose some of their best employees. So in North Carolina, in 2024, there are about 100,000 fewer parents of young children under age five in our labor force than there was just five years ago in 2019. And a big reason why a lot of parents have dropped out of labor force is because of childcare issues. We did a study with the NC and US Chamber foundations last year that found that about 35% of parents who experienced employment disruptions in the past year reported leaving the workforce as a direct result of issues with childcare. That same study found that childcare issues in North Carolina is costing our economy about $5.65 billion per year in lost economic activity from businesses and lost state and local tax government revenue. We did another study last year with the Department of Commerce that found that solving childcare issues could increase North Carolina's GDP by $7.5 billion per year and add up to 60,000 jobs to our state's economy. So, you know, there's several issues that parents do love for childcare. Chief among them really is the cost of childcare. Here in New Hanover County, the average cost of infant care is about $13,500 per year. It's not much cheaper for toddlers, a little under $13,000. And for context, right, infant and toddler care in New Hanover County and across the state is now more than the cost of in-state tuition at UNC Wilmington, at ECU, at Carolina, at every public university in the state. So it's now more expensive to pay for childcare than it is to pay for your kid's college education. And even for families who can't afford childcare, right, access is limited. And I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Leanna, now to talk a little bit more about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Neil, and thank you all for having us. In New Hanover County, we've found that licensed providers can only serve about a third of the children under age six in the county, and only half of those with parents who are working. In North Carolina, we've seen a drastic increase in our closure rates, particularly as of August of this year, childcare programs are closing at double the rate that they are opening. And as of July, three childcare programs have closed in Wilmington, leading to a loss of 71 slots. This lack of affordable, accessible childcare impacts local businesses, and it makes it hire to hire and retain employees. It affects, it affects economic developers who are trying to bring new jobs, new revenue to the city of Wilmington, and it leads to financial stress for families and pushes parents out of the workforce. And we want to make sure that communities like Wilmington remain great places to live, work, and raise a family. And that means making sure families can find and afford care. That's why we're here, and we're working to elevate this issue. It's a top concern for parents and the business community, and likely for this council. We want to convey the message so that North Carolina's leaders will give us this issue the urgency it deserves. And I'll pass it over to Michael to wrap up.
We thank Councilwoman Andrews for getting us on the agenda. We thank you for your time. This is the first in a series that we're going to try to do in every county and every part of the state, but Wilmington has an opportunity to be a leader and pass the first one. Just encouraging the state of North Carolina and our officials to take this issue seriously. It's not going away, and we need to make sure that it's a priority in the months and years to come.
Thank you, sir. Very well done. You know, since we have the, I think, the CEO from the chamber here, and you seem to be working together on this particular issue, which is a very important issue to not only this community but the entire state, I know that, I think you folks have been working on this pretty serious, and I appreciate everybody up here supporting this.
And Councilwoman Andrews, I sent you a text earlier this evening
I saw it.
that I've been meaning to send to you since I saw the agenda last week, and, you know, life gets in the way. Thank you all for giving me a few moments, and thank you guys for making the trip from Raleigh. They actually have presented to the chamber's Public Policy Committee, and the North Carolina Chamber, on behalf of all the chambers across the state, has done a lot of work through the foundation, the North Carolina Chamber Foundation, studying the economic impact. And it is, in fact, a pretty large impact on our economy because those people who can't access good quality childcare stay home and give their children the childcare and the pre-K themselves, they can't work. So our members then have a harder time filling the jobs that they need to fill. So it's just a cyclical thing that is an issue. I would ask that we not only urge the General Assembly, right, to address these issues, but all communities across the entire state. We all have a play, a role to play in this. The business community is stepping in very strongly. We have a childcare task force or coalition that's a part of the North Carolina Chamber. Large businesses in Wilmington and across the state are playing a role. Chambers of Commerce CEOs are on that coalition, as well as small businesses, trying to figure out, is it tax credits to businesses to urge them to play a role? There are regulations on childcare facilities that maybe aren't keeping, they're not about keeping children safe, but that they are making it cost prohibitive to offer childcare. What can we do about that? There are local government land use regulations that might make it a challenge to have a childcare facility. Can we do something about that? And finally, workforce development for childcare professionals. There, people aren't choosing that as a profession, right? And so what can we do to help develop our workforce for childcare? We're all in as a business community, and so I wanted to endorse the idea of urging the General Assembly, but I'd ask that you go a little bit further and urge all of us to work together to address the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Waddell?
Yeah. Ms. English stole a little bit of my thunder. She's used to that, but, no, I do, I do appreciate you all being here and highlighting the importance of childcare. I have two young, two young children. Certainly a challenge for families across North Carolina. I just want to quickly clarify, this resolution is not proposing that the city fund childcare or administer healthcare or anything of that. So essentially just a statement to the General Assembly. And then to Ms. English's point, perhaps we could broaden it a bit, maybe to, I mean, I would say nonprofits and faith centers, and, I mean, everybody should have a seat at the table here. And then also, just, I did a little bit of research when I saw this come up, and I'm sure y'all are aware, being experts, that the state of North Carolina has a pilot project called the North Carolina TriShare Childcare Program, where I believe, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, the state, the employer, and the employee, each kind of share in the cost of childcare. I'm understanding, and I'm seeing some heads nod, that it's showing real promise, and it's expected to see some expansion. So, I mean, would that be something to integrate into this resolution? Has it been something that you've considered? Just noting the, I guess, the positivity of the existing pilot project, something of that nature?
Yeah. So I know that there's currently the pilot project going on in North Carolina. I can speak a little bit to where the pilot came from, from Michigan. Michigan was the first to launch the TriShare program, and they've seen employee retention, which as we know, it costs more to recruit and retain than it is as you have turnover. And so, yeah, we've been seeing that they have expanded for employers statewide, and it's a great opportunity to have full-on buy-in from not only the state but also the employer and the employee, which reduces the cost for the employee by 65%.
And I would say for this resolution, we kept the policies specifics sort of out of it because there's a range of solutions, a lot of good ideas out there. We're part of the statewide task force on early childhood, working on some of these solutions, and we just sort of want to uplift the issue to get people thinking about it because we want everybody thinking about it and coming up with the good ideas.
Councilman Waddell, the TriShare works really well with large employers. Small businesses might struggle, although it would be a phenomenal retention tool to keep your employees at, to require businesses to be part of it. I'd probably have to advocate against that idea.
Not to require, certainly.
But as a choice, for those employers who believe that they can afford it, one, and that it would help them keep their employees, absolutely, it's working really well in Michigan and in those pilot counties so far.
Yeah. And the intent of that topic was really just to open the aperture on this resolution if we are indeed the first to do it. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not just saying, hey, state of North Carolina figured this out, when we've got a lot of people at the table, and they've already kind of taken some steps, I think, in a bipartisan manner on this TriShare program.
Ms. Andrews?
Yeah. I just wanted to point out in moving this that there is a small typo at the very end on the date. It says 2024, and it needs to be 2025, obviously, but other than that, I'm moving the motion.
Ms. Spears?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know about anybody else, but, and it's probably just me, but when, when I hear this information and I'm looking at it before me, and I think early childhood, I can't help but to think about an issue that we were just facing in this community, where hundreds of students in pre-K were being denied access or denied access to classrooms, and yet we're, we're being supportive of this. We're, you know, making an effort to talk to the state, but we could have talked to our cross-town neighbors, more specifically the county commissioners, who chose not to fund pre-K classrooms in our community. So I just don't want this to be performative. Maybe I've been in a little bit in my feels all week, feeling a certain way politically, and this just, and it's a good effort. I'm not knocking anything that you're saying, or I'm not knocking this resolution, but I'm thinking we have to do more than just talk. We have to do more than just come to the microphone and throw around facts and say what we support when we don't actually support things right here in our own community. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Thank you all for being here. Next item, this is item R2, which is a resolution to authorize city staff to pursue the acquisition of real property suitable for the development of a new park and recreation amenities. At this time, I'd like to recognize City Manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. The item before you tonight is a resolution that is doing things slightly out of the norm of our process, but what this is really focusing on is looking at our strategic plan and its call for the need to acquire additional park space and making sure that we have amenities where people live, work, and play. And we do have an opportunity that we believe is before us that is very time-sensitive, where if we are able to pull this together, we would be able to acquire a fairly notable tract of land where the property owner is interested in seeing it preserved for a future park space. At this time, though, the cost, the anticipated cost does exceed what we think would be feasible for us to do on our own. So in speaking with staff and looking at our finances, we do feel like we would be able to put some money towards it, but then we need permission from council to be able to go pursue additional partnership opportunities to see if we're able to pull this together. So what we are proposing at this time would be council essentially earmarking up to $1 million of our fund balance to be able to go toward a strategic acquisition of park, future park property, and then also seeking your permission to be able to put that into some grant applications to be able to show that we are able to put some funding towards it as we ask for their support, and then also engaging with our county partners to see if there is a funding partnership that is possible there as well. We understand that those are a lot of moving parts, but we need the permission from council before we were to start down any of those paths. The other component of this, if council is amenable, would be essentially a no obligation contract. We only have verbal commitments right now on this property. It would allow us to lock in the price that is being discussed, but without any obligation. So there would be the traditional due diligence that would be required before we closed on any sale. That would include current appraisal and make sure that there's an updated and current Phase 1 environmental, and then making sure that those other funding partnerships were in place. If any of that were to fall through, we would be able to exit out of the contract without any financial penalty. All of those steps would come back to council at a later date, and that would include talking about the exact parcel in public session, the exact terms of the contract, the purchase amount, and any partnerships that we were able to secure, including any of the details related to those partnerships. So that is what we have before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Hawk? If not, where the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember Ravenbark. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six to one.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. That brings us, this concludes the regular agenda. Are there any items to be brought forward by our city attorney?
Yes, sir. We do have a close session motion for you. You should have that on the dais.
Do have it right here. Our city manager, Ms. Hawk, do you have anything?
I, just a couple of items really quick for council. First of all, I did want to echo what Councilmember Spears said earlier, just a special thanks to Dave Mays, as well as our finance and budget staff, and Dave's team as well, and our Parks and Recreation staff. Tons and tons of work went into the Parks and Recreation Facility project and getting it to the point that it could come forward. This is a huge step forward for the department. The staff is very, very excited to be able to have updated, modern, usable facilities, and so I do just want to recognize his work in particular, but really the work of staff to get us to be able to move forward with that, and appreciate council's support. The other item, do want to introduce a new member of staff who's with us tonight. Dennis Licaria is on day two of his tenure as our new chief of staff. This is a new position for the city that is using some open positions and some salary savings from those to be able to fund it. But Dennis comes to us from Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, and prior to that, he was with the Mecklenburg County Manager's Office. Dennis has over 20 years of experience, really doing remarkable work in the public space, moving capital. space, moving capital projects forward, doing capital planning and construction-related initiatives with the county. He was also involved in affordable housing initiatives, health and human services initiatives. But what Dennis is really known for is his ability to cut across internal and external boundaries. He builds consensus and collaboration and he really just gets things done. And he does it all while garnering the, the respect of everyone that he encounters. So I fully expect Dennis to play a pivotal role in shaping our city operations, which will include identifying opportunities to increase cross-functional collaboration, increase our efficiency in communication, and ultimately reduce costs and delivery times, which will, of course, then lead to increases in our service delivery standards across the city. So very happy to have him on board. Finally, tonight, Councilmember Joyner requested an update on our mobile showers. Apologize, wasn't able to give that yesterday with everything else going on, but did want to let you know that our police department is actively in conversation with one of our local nonprofits who believes that they would be able to deploy the showers. There is a bit of a conversation about some additional funding that might be necessary for them to deploy them effectively. We are working through that with them, looking at the potential for the city agency funding process, but we know that that's part of the budget process, so that would be a few months away. So trying to engage with them on how they would be able to deploy the showers sooner than as part of the budget process. So that conversation continues, but we are actively speaking with them and we'll be happy to provide an update once we have a little bit more.
And Becky, does that include the laundry trailer as well?
That is, I, I heard mobile showers, so I will check to see if that is also, I didn't know that we had a, a mobile laundry trailer, so we'll look to see if those are both together, but I know that we were specifically talking to them about the showers.
And I, thank you for that update, I appreciate it. And that, in my view, that's not something that needs to wait until the next, next budget cycle. We've already talked tonight about pulling a fair bit out of fund balance and I can't imagine that this would compare to what we've done tonight. So I'd like an update on that as, as to what would be, need to be done for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Nothing further, thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk? Anything?
No, sir.
Ms. Spears.
Yep, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna continue with my performative measures piece as it relates to politics and how we conduct business in this community. Some folks, you, you can anticipate their actions to certain things in this community and some others, we, we expect to, to have an open mind and to go with the goodwill of the people. I believe it to be very disheartening to see us criminalize homelessness in our community and to not listen to the consensus of the people in this community for the sake of whatever. I would say I'm very disappointed in a few of you tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Andrews.
Just a reminder that early voting starts October sixteenth at twelve forty-one military cutoff, that is the Northeast Library, and that will continue until we meet the next time and there will be some additional sites opening later on in the month and we'll talk about that when we meet.
Mr. Ron Bar. Mayor Pro Tim.
Just, I think, two things. One, first of all, recognize that October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so we encourage, you know, all of us to make sure we try to take care of our health. And then the second thing is to continue to pray for our friends in Southport, you know, and, and what concerns me oftentimes is what happens around the country can easily happen in Wilmington. So it's gotta, we gotta make sure that we continue to check in on our friends, check on those guys that you think are getting okay. And we've gotta, we gotta recognize that folks that have mental health issues need services. So those are the three things I wanted to share today.
Mr. Waddell? Joyner? Okay. So a motion to go into closed session pursuant to provisions of North Carolina General Statute, section one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A and three, in order for the city council to, one, consult with and provide instruction to the city attorney regarding a potential legal matter. Have a motion, Councilmember Ravenbark, second by Councilmember Andrews. On favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. We will, closed session will be held in the retiring room behind council chambers. At the end of the closed session, council will reopen its public session and adjourn at that time. So we're not going to closed session.